Two things I want to say. Pete Johnson, 510 Metro, Harrison Street. Ms. Kepine, I want to thank you for bringing up domestic partnership. That's something that is a no-brainer. We should have done it years ago. I appreciate it very, very much. It does not just handle one specific group of people. It covers a multitude of people that live together. You don't have to be married anymore in this lifestyle. Second thing I want to talk to you about is the chicken debate. What I've given you is a package of information that I pulled up on the Internet all about backyard chickens. Good points, bad points, everything else. They do have diseases. They do spread the West Nile disease. They do spread mites, all sorts of problems. Being an HIV patient, I am very, very careful of this type of a situation, and I do feel that it is a public health situation. The problem that we're going to have is if you lower the distance, many houses only have maybe 30 feet width. Okay? So if you're going to let everybody have chickens, you're going to have four or five chickens here. You're going to have four or five chickens here. You'll have four or five chickens here. They do get loose. They do fly away. There are roosters out here that they're going to mate with. Portland, Oregon, had to have open season on chickens because they multiplied so much. Another thing is how is code going to enforce it? They're going to climb over the fence and count chickens? How are they going to tell if a chicken is a chicken or a rooster? They're going to go to a class and learn how to tell the difference? I mean, we can't enforce the codes we've got now. So, you know, I think we need to really be concerned about making this change.
Thank you. I'm going to go to every other side, and I forgot to say, please, preferences given, first in line to people speaking on items that are on the agenda. So if you're speaking on something not on the agenda, go to the back of the line.
Good morning. My name is Ed Lally. I reside at 2621 South Bryant Circle, Tampa. My spouse and I have been together for 34 years. We moved to Tampa 33 years ago. We chose Florida, like most people choose our state, for the beaches and the sun. We chose Tampa because it was a city not yet too big and had most of the elements we were looking for. We have watched Tampa grow from one high-rise downtown to more than a dozen and three beautiful new museums. But more importantly, we have seen Tampa grow as a city willing to embrace diversity and fairness at every opportunity. Phil and I went to Canada in 2006 to get married because we couldn't get married anywhere in this country. As you know, our country, our state, our city doesn't recognize our union. And because of that, we do not have the 1,100 protections and benefits that are allowed to the married people in this country. And that is why I stand before you today and ask you to adopt a registry that will give Phil and me access to a handful of crucial protections so we don't have to worry that we'll be denied access to one another in an emergency. Take our city to the next level. Show that this is one of the most inclusive and welcoming cities in the country and approve domestic partnership registry. Thank you again for your past and continued leadership in making this the city of Tampa the city that welcomes and embraces all. Thank you.
Thank you. Next.
I'd like to speak on behalf of the domestic partner registration. I'm happy to be standing before you and being able to make this appeal in favor of the legislation for the domestic partner registry. What would be worse if I were here physically unable to be standing here? I was thinking, who would speak for me if I wasn't able to do so for myself? Who knows best? Would lawyers, social workers, who never knew me, or laws determine my well-being? I live alone. I moved to Florida from the Northeast. My siblings and children did not move with me. As I grow older, we visit less and less. My family don't know my everyday ways. They don't know the people who are most important to me here. A while ago, my mother died. She had Alzheimer's. It was a very slow debilitating illness. Others had to make life choices for her because she hadn't prepared for something like that. Before my mother died, she and I were very close. We had conversations of her final wishes. She wanted to be cremated, her ashes to be released over a summer beach where we all enjoyed some of the best times of our youth. Unfortunately, she now rests in a box buried in the cold earth. Her final wish is unfulfilled. My family didn't get it right. My fear of Alzheimer's is it is hereditary, and I don't want to be buried in a box either. This proposed legislation is important so we can communicate our wishes through our partners, who may know us better than our families. Florida is like a magnet for older people to move to. Like myself, I've come along to start a new life, to meet new people. My brothers and sisters, who are at least 1,200 miles away, don't understand me or how I live today. As I grow older, I don't want to be a burden to any of my family. They no longer know me. Sometimes accidents happen, and we may find ourselves unprepared. If I were to have a sudden serious accident, my closest child lives in Seattle, Washington, and she's not always available. If I were to become immediately incapacitated, a registered domestic partner could ensure timely care. Otherwise, the hospital might possibly withhold treatment because they couldn't find a relative, even though there was someone who knew me best right there sitting in their waiting room.
Thank you. Can you give us your name? We need everyone's name and address for the record.
My name is Stephanie Nichols. I live at 116-114 Gardendale Drive, Tampa.
Thank you.
Good morning. My name is Philip Dinkins. I live at 2621 South Bryant Circle in Tampa. I'd like to thank Councilwoman Kepine for your leadership in bringing the domestic partner registry up for discussion with council. The domestic partner registry is very important for thousands in our city. It is going to be a lifeline in times of crisis, and it also adds dignity to domestic partner relationships throughout our city. It's also going to serve as an important message to businesses as they continue to look to Tampa to move. Businesses that we want are the ones that appreciate diversity and welcoming of all employees, makes people feel valued, and I would certainly encourage your support of the domestic partner registry and vote in favor today. Thank you.
Thank you. Next.
My name is Zeke Fried. I live at 2907 West San Rafael, Tampa, Florida. And my partner and I have 32 years in county. Both support, Nick and I, support domestic partners registry. I am particularly touched by it because I was in a horrific car accident, and when it came down to Nick coming to the hospital and getting, they called him to come down. He went down. When he got there, there was confusion as to what they could tell him, what they couldn't tell him. He knew I was in bad shape. That was it. It is very important that domestic partners for couples in Florida, in Tampa, have the ability to make decisions for their partners. A domestic registry is crucial because if you put yourself in their position, run to a hospital and be told they're there, but they won't tell you anything. There's a decision to be made that I cannot make, and my partner knows what my decision is. He cannot make it. I know you'll support this. I have faith in you. Thank you, Yoli, and thank you for giving me this opportunity.
Thank you.
Hi there. My name is Sally Phillips, and I live at 7736 Jody Lynn Drive, Tampa. First of all, I'd certainly like to thank Councilwoman Kepine as a friend and actually a friend of all of you. I so do appreciate the fact that you all have brought this domestic partnership registry up. I know, Councilwoman, you just became a new grandmother, and I am extremely happy. And I know I've heard you say that you want Tampa to be a place where your grandson can live, and we all certainly believe that, too. You, by doing this, you are bringing Tampa to a level of fairness and equality for all of us. A lot of you know I have a partner also, and actually, the 31st of this month, we'll celebrate 24 years. And we have all the legal, we've gone and gotten all the legal things that we need to do to protect each other, but you never know when something's going to happen. And that's what this registry will protect us from, is you never know when one of us is going to get hurt. You never know. You know, when we need a protection the most, this is what this will do. So I so appreciate what you all are doing. I know this is going to pass. I know it is, and I'm very touched by the fact that you, all of you, have done this. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good morning, and thank you, council, and thank you, Councilwoman Kepine. Thank you very much. You know, Tampa's a great city, and there are other great cities. And to make it even greater, what we have to do is take a step forward. I'm in a domestic partnership relationship of 34 years with my partner, Mark. By the way, my name's Carrie West, 1901 North A Street in Tampa. The Tampa Domestic Partner Registry, the ordinance itself is not just black, white, Hispanic, for old or young, disabled and/or healthy, and/or richer for poor. It is for all the citizens and residents of Tampa, and we have to take note of that. The ordinance itself is going to be fair and is equal to all other cities that have stature and bring economic commerce into their areas. But it's good for all residents. It's good for all the people, and it's good for Tampa. Besides Tampa, by showing what you do as leaders of our community that have been elected, it's going to also show our county officials where to stand and what position they need to be, and they need to understand where the people are from Tampa and all of Hillsborough County. That is the next motive and next being. But we appreciate the time of you taking the opportunity to go and look at this possible being and change to making Tampa a greater city than it already is, and I appreciate this time. Thank you very much.
Carrie, could you give your name for the record?
Yeah, Carrie West.
Oh, you did?
Yeah.
Thanks. Next.
Hi, my name is Tim Heberlein, and I'm a new proud resident of the city of Tampa. Just moved to 24 East Fryerson Avenue. I am speaking on behalf of the Awake Tampa Coalition today in support of this. I'd like to thank Councilwoman Kepine in bringing this forward, and this is a very proud moment for the Coalition when it was brought before us, that we were very supportive of this. We represent about 12, a dozen-plus organizations representing thousands of residents from Tampa as well as the county area who would be potentially utilizing this registry. So I also want to emphasize the fact that this is not just an issue of same-gendered couples utilizing this, but also opposite-gendered couples who are in situations of domestic partnership relationships who would potentially be utilizing this service. So this, to me, is an issue of fairness, an issue of human dignity, as well as being allowed that human dignity for partners to be able to have those rights, which I think are, make this city in particular, great, and I'm very glad that the council is hearing this today. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning, Madam Chair. My name's Don Road. I'm located at 412 Madison Street. Good morning, council. Mr. Shelby. I speak in favor of the adoption of the domestic partnership registry because I believe sincerely that it will take some of the sting, embarrassment, and discrimination out of the other effects that are caused by the general ban on same-sex marriage in the state of Florida. It would also have a positive impact on people who aren't affected negatively by the ban on same-sex marriage in Florida. Also, in reference to item number 74, it's disappointing to me that there's such a dust raised over the issue of municipal chickens, when other free speech issues have gone completely ignored by this board, who prefers to think of itself as being something other than a rubber stamp on issues of free speech, assembly, and so forth. I urge you, then, to do everything you can to take all deliberate speed towards licensing and leashing domestic chickens in the city of Tampa. Thank you.
Please let us know what item you're speaking on.
Good morning. I'll be speaking about the domestic partnership registry. My name is John Desmond, and I'm the president of the Tampa Chapter of PFLAG, Parents, Families, and Friends of Lesbians and Gays. PFLAG Tampa speaks for the tens of thousands of fathers and mothers, sisters and brothers, and sons and daughters who consider at least one LGBT member a loved one. My wife and I, we have a son, our only son, and his partner, we consider them to be our family. And like every proud mom and pop, we want the very best for them. Our LGBT loved ones deserve official recognition of their relationships, yet far too many of them, they lack their basic rights and protections, rights that the rest of us take for granted. All too often, we hear about painful experiences our loved ones have endured from not being notified of an emergency involving a partner or a partner's child, to not being able to make end-of-life decisions for a partner. This registry is a huge step in the right direction for Tampa and for our loved ones. We thank the city council members for voting to approve the domestic partnership registry ordinance. I forgot to give you my address. It's 3015 Forest Hammock Drive in Plant City.
Thank you.
Good morning. I'm Kathy James, 11803 Ross Main Drive, Riverview, Florida. And I'm here as a member of, a resident of, the county to thank y'all for your leadership in regard to equality, for your leadership in regard to fairness, and as I'm also here representing my partner of 17 years and our son, who is 12, and would like to hope that your leadership and this body will rub off a little bit on others in the county. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning, council. John Dingfelter, Senior Staff Attorney for the American Civil Liberties Union of Florida. My cohort, Dr. Joyce Hamilton Henry, our regional director, couldn't be here today, but I speak on her behalf as well. We are so proud to be here today to speak in favor of the domestic partnership registry. And again, Councilwoman Yoli Kepine, thanks for your leadership on this, and all of you, hopefully, for your support. I also want to recognize some other groups that we've been working with, including Equality Florida, the LGBT Caucus, Gay Boar Alliance, et cetera. You know, as human beings, we seem to like labels, okay? Are you gay? Are you straight? Are you young? Are you old? But at the end of the day, what are we? We're human beings, and we all deserve equal human rights. And that's what the ACLU is committed towards. We all know probably very, very well, young, old, gay, straight folks who are in committed long-term relationships. And regardless of what label we put on them, each one of those folks and each one of those partners deserves the same type of human rights and human dignity that hopefully you'll be addressing today. You know, as council members, we go out on the stump, and you speak to the fact that it's an honor and a privilege to serve this community. And I would hope that when you vote yes today, that you recognize that it's an honor and a privilege to be doing so. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
My name's Jacob Hero. I live at 14826 Lake Magdalen Circle in Tampa. And I'm speaking on the domestic partner registry. Gender is a very complicated thing, and some of us, myself included, have transitioned from one gender to another in their lifetime, and this whole domestic partnership thing is so important for those of us who are legally unable to marry at all. If you're, if you transition from one sex to another, then you, in the federal government, might not be allowed to change your sex, and in the, in state government, you can. This means that if I were to want to marry someone in another country, and that would be impossible in terms of immigration, and I just think that looking beyond the gender of one spouse and the other spouse is essential. It's a basic human rights issue. We should be able to have all the same human rights as everyone else. Thank you.
Thank you. Next.
Good morning. I'm Amanda Matthews. I live at 6701 North Navin Avenue. I am here to speak to number 74 about the backyard chickens. I am in favor of residents keeping backyard chickens. They make great pets. They are intelligent and very entertaining. They're relatively inexpensive to keep and care for, including proper veterinary and vaccinations. They are great natural pest control. They're wonderful for our gardens, providing fertilizer and tilling our soil. They're a great source of more nutritious and humanely-produced eggs, and they're a great opportunity to teach our children about where their food comes from, responsibility, and stewardship. As to proposed language vis in any ordinance, vis a vis Pinellas County or any of the other counties, I would please ask for fewer restrictions as to space requirements, number of birds, and constant confinement. The rabbi shared with us in the invocation about the simple things which brighten our day, and I would say that for a lot of Tampa residents, our backyard chickens are one of those things. Thanks very much.
Thank you.
Good morning. I'm Mary Ruth Kennedy. I live at 10524 Chambers Drive, Tampa. I'm here to speak about the domestic partnership registry. I'm president of the Board of the Tampa Bay Business Guild, the Tampa LGBT Chamber of Commerce. Tampa Bay Business Guild cannot and does not support specific candidates, but we feel it's important to speak out on this issue. Our members are primarily small business owners who are LGBT and allied-owned. We care about the business climate in Tampa Bay. We care about jobs and making it easier to do business. We want to see businesses expand in and to Tampa, start up in Tampa, and transfer their employees here. Domestic partnership registries are not only essential for the citizens of Tampa, but also for businesses that wish to expand. Corporations often take municipal inclusivity policies into account when developing their business and establishing a registry as a way of ensuring that Tampa is attracting top talent and high-paying jobs. As we all know, we often compete with Orlando, Fort Lauderdale, and Miami-Dade for that talent and those jobs. Domestic partner registries simply put us back on even footing, and in this economy, we need to be on the even footing everywhere we can. But domestic partnership registries also make it easier for businesses to do business. A domestic partnership registry cuts down on paperwork and time for the employer. Many large companies offer domestic partnership benefits, but in order for the employee to prove that they are in fact in a committed relationship, there can be forms, interviews, discussions, affidavits, and more. With a DP registry, one form will suffice, and doing business just got easier in Tampa. The establishment of a domestic partnership registry brings little risk, virtually no cost, and amazing rewards to our community and businesses. Supporting the rights of all citizens with a domestic partnership registry will send the right signal to your constituents, to our state, and to the nation that Tampa means business. Thank you for your time.
Counselor, our rules say we have 30 minutes for public comment. We've got another six left, so...
Motion to extend 15 minutes?
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And if people in the audience could be aware that we are getting short on time, so to keep your comments brief, and if it's already been said, consider that we probably heard it, and you can probably take less time. Thank you. Next.
Morning. Phyllis Hunt, Senior Minister at Metropolitan Community Church in Tampa. I live at 6706 North Central in Tampa. And I just want to thank you for your consideration on this decision and the direction of leadership that you're bringing to our city. My spouse and I are celebrating 20 years this year, and our marriage in Toronto doesn't have any value here. We certainly can fill out forms for healthcare surrogate and living will, but domestic partner registry brings value to the city because it brings value, validity, and equality to its residents, which in turn will bring back value to the city. Thank you so much for all you do.
Thank you. Next.
My name is Rosal Parks. I live at 11408 Country Oaks Drive, Tampa. I am here speaking about the domestic partner registry. My partner would be here also, but he's recovering from a week-long surgery that he's recovering at home right now. During the week that he was in the hospital, I was not denied access to him. I was able to be in proximity of him while doctors were talking about the medical decisions. Doctors talked to me first sometimes before they could talk to him because he was sedated or he was altered because of the medications that he was on. This was allowed because I had a medical surrogacy for him. I also had power of attorney over him and all of his medical decisions at that point because we had that registered through a lawyer. That costs us a large chunk of cash. That is something that everybody has access to. The domestic partner registry that you are proposing, thank you, first of all, thank you very much for that, is going to be able to give more people access to things that I have that I had to pay for, not as much as what I have because what we have is very extensive, because we have been together 15 years. And I don't see that ending at any time. And I think that's far more than any Kardashian could ever say. But, thank you. Thank you.
Good morning, members of council. My name is Frank Roder. I live at 908 East Louisiana Avenue in Tampa, and many of you may know me as the chair of the CBJ Citizens Advisory Board. As a lifelong citizen of Tampa, I have watched our city grow. I was in the audience right here when Tampa revised the Human Rights Ordinance to include sexual orientation back in the early 1990s. Back in the 1990s, I also celebrated when Hillsborough County included sexual orientation in the Human Rights Ordinance and participated in the protest when Hillsborough County took those protections away. At that time, I was extremely proud to be living in the city rather than in the county. When the debate occurred over library displays depicting gay pride in 2005, I was once again ashamed to live in Hillsborough County but proud that I lived in Tampa. In 2009, as a member of the City of Tampa Human Rights Board, I stood before this council and spoke about adding sexual identity and expression to our Human Rights Ordinance. I stood with pride as Tampa City Council approved that legislation. Again, Tampa is recognized as a city that values diversity of its citizens. Today, I'm here to speak in favor of the domestic partner registry. I've been with my partner, Michael, for 29 years. To make sure that we can make decisions for each other in the case of emergencies, we have met with our attorney three separate times over the years. We did this because that was the only way we could make legally binding decisions for each other. By having a domestic partner registry, it would be easier for dedicated couples to make healthcare decisions for their partners. No committed couple should ever have to worry about their relationship being questioned in an emergency or whether they will be called when their partner is in a life-threatening accident. It is time for Tampa to join the growing list of communities across the country and across the state to provide these essential protections for our families. Passage of this registry will enhance Tampa's reputation as a place that is welcoming and inclusive. Thank you, council.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, just in regard to item number 75 later in the day, I was hoping to ask that my comments, Mr. O'Neill's comments, be reserved at that time when you hear it for three minutes, please, as report from your legal staff on the digital billboards. Again, we'd just like to reserve comment at that time for three minutes, Mr. O'Neill and I.
This is, it's actually a staff report, so I think really probably now would be the time to do that.
Well, there is, we are asking the council in action if you want me to do the nod. We prefer to do it at the item.
I'd like to move that we allow his comments to be part of item 75 when it comes up.
Second.
And Mr. O'Neill as well, please.
And Mr. O'Neill, too.
Thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed?
My name is Mina Morgan. I'm at 1201 East Clifton Street, Tampa, Florida. I'm an animal rights lawyer and have recently represented pet chickens before the Code Enforcement Board. I'd like to thank you all for reconsidering the chicken ordinance, which is antiquated and certainly out of step with all the other communities in Florida. The Code Enforcement Board seemed to rest their ruling against my client's pet chickens that they had raised by hand and kept for two years because they used the poop from the chickens for recycling in the Seminole Heights Community Garden, and because they occasionally ate the eggs from the chickens and gave them to neighbors. For that reason, they seem to believe that these were not pets, even though... For that reason, they seemed to believe that these were not pets, even though they followed my clients around. They, any ordinance we have needs to build into it something related to a nuisance, a public nuisance. My clients lost their chickens simply because they have one delusional neighbor who is brain damaged. And I'm not saying this, I believe this man actually thinks that he will have epileptic fits because there are chickens next door to him, but just because one neighbor has a mental problem should not deprive people of their pets. Nuisance laws have worked very well for dogs barking for years, and for odors coming from next door from cat rescues for years. I've represented dogs and cats throughout Tampa for the past five years, and I'd like to see if you would consider making it a requirement that two neighbors from different addresses complain before someone loses their pets. Thank you.
Thank you. Next.
Good morning. Kurt King, 1014 Emerald Creek, Valrico, Florida, Vice President of Gaybor. I'm here today about the Domestic Registry. My partner was on life support in September, and on three different occasions, I had to go home and get power of attorney paperwork to take him back to the hospital. With the Domestic Registry, I wouldn't have had to do that, and please support this. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Susan Shannon. I live at 2711 West North B Street in Tampa. I'm here to speak on two issues. The Domestic Partner Registry, I want you to know that that is something that will benefit me, and in an opposite-sex relationship of 23 years, not marrying until my brothers and sisters in the LGBT community can marry as well, and so I want you to know that will benefit a lot of other people than just the LGBTQ community. I also want to speak to Resolution 81, the Corporate Personhood Amendment, and I just want to bring to your attention, in case you don't already know, that one of the forces that's starving our cities and our counties is the corporate agenda that is sucking all public money into the private sector, and that if we want to have vibrant and vital cities and counties, we need to stop the corporate agenda and listen more to the citizens than to the giant corporations that don't care if we have public services, that don't care if we have education, healthcare, and all the other benefits, snow plowing, clean water, the things that public employees provide and public services provide. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Grace Benkey, 7109 North 18th Street, Tampa. I just wanted to say, there didn't seem to be a lot of visual support for the backyard chickens, and I'm all for it. My chickens have been just as much pets to me as cats and dogs. Financially, I've spent just as much money on veterinary care for them as I ever would for any of my other pets. They're pets, they're not food, they're not anything else, and I am all for loosening restrictions. The good so outweighs any, any sort of bad that anyone could come up with. Also, I support the Domestic Partnership Registry. It's awesome. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning, council members. My name is Scott Sbar. I reside at 1120 East Kennedy Boulevard, here to talk on the Domestic Registry. I'm the Marketing Director for a statewide LGBT publication, the largest in the state, and I would love nothing more than to write in my column and to report on our website that Tampa, Florida, has joined the many, many cities who have approved the Domestic Partner Registry, so I thank you so much for voting yes on this very, very important matter. Have a good afternoon.
Thank you.